1 2 3 4 5 6 7 8 9 10 11 12 13 14 15 16 17 18 19 20 21 22 23 24 25 26 27 28 29 30 31 32 33 34 35 36 37 38 39 40 41 42 43 44 45 46 47 48 49 50 51 52 53 54 55 56 57 58 59 60 61 62 63 64 65 66 67 68 69 70 71 72 73 74 75 76 77 78 79 80 81 82 83 84 85 86 87 88 89 90 91 92 93 94 95 96 97 98 99 100 101 102 103 104 105 106 107 108 109 110 111 112 113 114 115 116 117 118 119 120 121 122 123 124 125 126 127 128 129 130 131 132 133 134 135 136 137 138 139 140 141 142 143 144 145 146 147 148 149 150 151 152 153 154 155 156 157 158 159 160 161 162 163 164 165 166 167 168 169 170 171 172 173 174 175 176 177 178 179 180 181 182 183 184 185 186 187 188 189 190 191 192 193 194 195 196 197 200 201 202 203 204 205 206 207 208 209 210 211 212 213 214 215 216 217 218 219 220 221 222 223 224 225 226 227 228 229 230 231 232 233 234 235 236 237 238 239 240 241 242 243 244 245 246 247 248 249 250 251 252 253 254 255 256 257 258 259 260 261 262 263 264 265 266 267 268 269 270 271 272 273 274 275 276 277 278 279 280 281 282 283 284 285 286 287 288 289 290 291 292 293 294 295 296 297 298 299 300 301 302 303 304 305 306 307 308 309 310 311 312 313 314 315 316 317 318 319 320 321 322 323 324 325 326 327 328 329 330 331 332 333 334 335 336 337 338 339 340 341 342 343 344 345 346 347 348 349 350 351 352 353 354 355 356 357 358 359 360 361 362 363 364 365 366 367 368 369 370 371 372 373 374 375 376 377 378 379 380 381 382 383 384 385 386 387 388 389 390 391 392 393 394 395 396 397 398 399
Foxborough Planning Board Meeting of 26th October will come to order. Just to let everyone know that meeting may be accessed by Zoom this evening and also it is on television through the public access. So people should just be aware of that. Any department update or anything?
No, the only update I have is that we're working, continuing to work for the, towards doing the zoning package for the MBTA community's requirement by the state. I had a meeting with Barney over it yesterday. He's drafting the first draft of the, of all the zoning changes that would be required. And then we'll have, invite other people to look at it and give us their opinion. The consultant has also been very helpful, giving us samples of other bylaws.
Anything under active subdivisions?
No, the Lawson Farm has power on the streetlights on Phase Two, and they're working on Phase Three, the poles as well. So just tugging along.
Finally got the attention of the electric company.
Yeah.
Making progress, which is good.
Another department update is Gabby's Outlaw next week.
Oh yeah, please be kind to Diana because I will be gone. She will be...
I'm running the whole place now.
She'll be the entire land use department.
Are you going somewhere good?
I am going to London and Paris.
You should just enjoy yourself.
Yes, I will not check emails. I already put my out of office.
No, but we, you know what? We have your phone on all of ours, so we know exactly where you are. Okay, minutes of September 28th?
I sent them out this afternoon, but they're pretty short, so.
I'm prepared to make a motion. Please do. Move we approve the minutes for September 28th, 2023. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And well, we'll get the bylaws later. We've got a couple more minutes before we do the, or can we start that?
Yeah, we can start early because it's not a public hearing.
Yeah, okay, good. So we have some informal discussions. Proposed subdivision land on Ridge Road assessors map 35 parcel six and seven with Mr. Buckley as from Bay Colony, or his representative.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
So good to do, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name's Cameron Gray. I'm here tonight to discuss the proposed subdivision on Ridge Road. If I could share my screen, I'll put up the plans that I just handed out to everyone.
Can't share your screen now, your boss was on.
There we go. So this property consists of two parcels totaling 7.1 acres on the eastern side of Ridge Road. The parcel located approximately 2,600 feet north of the intersection with Chestnut Street. It's located directly across from 46th Ridge Road. So I was actually going over this earlier today with Bill, and he informed me that Mr. Peterson used to be a former director of butter, if I'm correct?
Correct.
So this property is located within the residential and agricultural R40 zoning district. It is currently undeveloped and consists of a wooded area. So you can see the topography of the slide of the site. It slopes significantly up and away from the roadway to the central point of the site here, where it kind of has a high point before sloping back down to the water's edge. So it's just a big peninsula out here. So you can see I have my wetland line around the outside and it slopes down to the water. So we have not conducted any soil evaluations out here yet, but it's classified as a Hinkley Lonely Sand, which is a Class A soil. And based off of projects we've had around this site, we're anticipating there'll be nice soils out there. We've also brought this plan before the Foxborough Conservation Commission, and they've verified that wetland line with us. So our client is proposing a four lot subdivision. So if you turn to sheet two. So what I have displayed for you is a conventional four lot subdivision that will conform to the subdivision regulations. So it's a 20, it's a 20-foot wide roadway with a cul-de-sac at the end with a 50-foot radius, along with the associated five-foot sidewalk running down one side of the roadway. So after discussions with their client, and for the sake of cutting costs, he wanted to pursue constructing this subdivision as a private roadway. So through the granting of waivers, we would essentially be constructing a glorified common driveway to service these four lots. So our first design, we, our idea was that we would be able to cut down on the roadway, so we'd do an 18-foot wide roadway. And instead of a cul-de-sac at the end, we were thinking a hammerhead design. So we took this design and we met with Ron and Gabby, and we also sent it over to the fire department to receive some feedback and any comments they may have.
Foxborough Planning Board Meeting of 26th October will come to order. Just to let everyone know that meeting may be accessed by Zoom this evening and also it is on television through the public access. So people should just be aware of that. Any department update or anything?
No, the only update I have is that we're working, continuing to work for the, towards doing the zoning package for the MBTA community's requirement by the state. I had a meeting with Barney over it yesterday. He's drafting the first draft of the, of all the zoning changes that would be required. And then we'll have, invite other people to look at it and give us their opinion. The consultant is also been very helpful, giving us samples of other bylaws.
Anything under active subdivisions?
No, the Lawson Farm has power on the streetlights on Phase Two, and they're working on Phase Three, the poles as well. So just tugging along.
Finally got the attention of the electric company.
Yeah.
Making progress, which is good.
Another department update is Gabby's out all next week.
Oh yeah, please be kind to Diana because I will be gone. She will be.
I'm running the whole place now.
She'll be the entire land use department.
Are you going somewhere good?
I am going to London and Paris.
You should just enjoy yourself.
Yes, I will not check emails. I already put my out of office.
No, but we, you know what, we have your phone on all of ours, so we know exactly where you are. Okay, minutes of September 28th.
I sent them out this afternoon, but they're pretty short, so.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Please do.
Move approve the minutes for September 28th, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And well, we'll get the bylaws later. We've got a couple more minutes before we do the, or can we start that?
Yeah, we can start early because it's not a public hearing.
Yeah, okay, good.
Cam.
So we have some informal discussions, proposed subdivision land on Ridge Road, assessors map 35 parcel six and seven with Mr. Buckley as from Bay Colony, or his representative.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
So good to do, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. For the record, my name's Cameron Gray. I'm here tonight to discuss the proposed subdivision on Ridge Road. If I could share my screen, I'll put up the plans that I just handed out to everyone.
Can't share your screen now, your boss was on.
There we go. So this property consists of two parcels totaling 7.1 acres, located on the eastern side of Ridge Road. The parcel located approximately 2,600 feet north of the intersection with Chestnut Street. It's located directly across from 46 Ridge Road. So I was actually going over this earlier today with Bill, and he would inform me that Mr. Peterson used to be a former director of butter, if I'm correct?
Correct.
So this property is located within the residential and agricultural R40 zoning district, is currently undeveloped and consists of a wooded area. So you can see the topography of the slide, of the site. It slopes significantly up and away from the roadway to the central point of the site here, where it kind of has a high point before sloping back down to the water's edge. So it's just a big peninsula out here. So you can see I have my wetland line around the outside and it slopes down to the water. So we have not conducted any soil evaluations out here yet, but it's classified as a Hinckley lonely sand, which is a Class A soil. And based off of projects we've had around this site, we're anticipating there will be nice soils out there. We've also brought this plan before the Foxborough Conservation Commission, and they've verified that wetland line with us. So our client is proposing a four lot subdivision. So if you turn to sheet two. So what I have displayed for you is a conventional four lot subdivision that will conform to the subdivision regulations. So it's a 20, it's a 20-foot wide roadway with a cul-de-sac at the end with a 50-foot radius, along with the associated five-foot sidewalk running down one side of the roadway. So after discussions with their client, and for the sake of cutting costs, he wanted to pursue constructing this subdivision as a private roadway. So through the granting of waivers, we would essentially be constructing a glorified common driveway to service these four lots. So our first design, we, our idea was that we would be able to cut down on the roadway. So we do an 18-foot wide roadway, and instead of a cul-de-sac at the end, we were thinking a hammerhead design. So we took this design and we met with Ron and Gabby, and we also sent it over to the fire department to receive some feedback and any comments they may have. So after receiving those comments and meeting with Gabby and Ron, we revised our design. So if you turn to sheet three, I have a rendering. So we're proposing a 20-foot wide roadway with the minimum cul-de-sac of 41 feet for the radius. And so in order to construct this, we'll require the granting of six waivers. So if you look in the bottom right-hand corner, I listed out all the waivers. So I'll just run down them real quick. So we're asking for, to allow an eight percent grade out here, where the maximum is usually a six percent grade. So again, the topography of this slide, of this site slopes significantly up towards the central portion of the site. So if we're going to do a six percent grade there, we're talking about 10 to 12-foot cut at the highest point. So if we were able to increase it to the eight percent, that would save us. So we'd be talking more of an eight to 10-foot cut as opposed to that significant cut before. And then also, as I stated, the radius, the cul-de-sac will be 41 feet where 50 is required. We're asking to waive the requirement for the curving along the edge of the roadway, the requirement for sidewalks, the street lighting, and as well as the street trees. So the drainage for this subdivision, we're proposing grass well, which will run along the left side of the roadway. So I designed it so the road pitches to one side, so it'll feed that grass well, which is a low-impact design before being conveyed to catch basins on either end, which will then feed into infiltration basins they have on either end of the site. So our client is aware that with this design, the road will never be accepted by the town and will have to remain private. But we believe that this subdivision is in character with the surrounding neighborhood as well as surrounding roadway. So we wanted to bring this design before you to receive any input before we move forward any further with this design. And that concludes my presentation.
Why are you asking us to waive the curving? Is that strictly because you want to spill the water off the edge of the road?
Yeah, so he wants to save cost out here. And then my idea was with the no curving, I'd be able to spill it out off the side of the road, which would allow me to use that grass well as opposed to the conventional catch basin.
What's the reason for shrinking the radius on the cul-de-sac?
So when we took it to the fire department, he specified the minimum radius, and he said it would be 41 feet. So we went with the minimum that we could.
Do you still have frontage with that smaller radius?
Yes. So even though the pavement is smaller, the layout is still the required size.
So you shrunk it because you can, not because you need to?
Yes.
And that's still within the 41 feet that allows safe, public safety equipment to, they won't have to back up or anything, they'll be able to go in to any of the two houses at the top?
Yeah, exactly. So like I said before, the first design we brought to him was a hammerhead at the top, so we eliminated the cul-de-sac completely. And we'd have it so that way you'd have to pull in and back out and then pull back out. So after they reviewed it, he wanted to see the cul-de-sac out there and have the roadway at that 20-foot width.
So if you've eliminated any kind of curving, why do we have a detention point?
So I'm still treating all the runoff from the roadway as well as the subdivision so I can just balance my runoffs from the site, so I'm not increasing anything.
So there, but there will be no drainage, is that correct?
No, there is drainage.
There is drainage.
Yes.
So I understand, you know, your client, and I would think this would be typical of a substantial client who would come to you, wants to save some money on this project.
Yes.
But, I mean, and I know, and I know you represent their interests, so I'm not, you know, being critical of that. But I guess my question is, what's the benefit, what's the benefit to the homeowners and the benefit to the community to, you know, I'm not saying that some of these wouldn't be relatively easy to waive without much consideration, but, you know, what's the benefit?
So in terms from the town's perspective, they won't have to, since this will maintain a private road, they won't have to go out and plow it or maintain that roadway at all. So it'll fall on the responsibility of the homeowners, and our client's aware that when he markets these properties, that he's got to make these people aware that the town is not going to be maintaining this roadway.
That's got to be in the deeds.
Yeah.
There'd be a homeowner association.
Essentially.
Any questions from anybody else?
And so the minimum lot size here would be 60,000, is that right?
Yep, yep.
Actually, 66.
66.
No, but the minimum in the zone. Oh, in the zone, okay, yes.
Yes, it's 16.
Yeah, so it's a zone too. So I need to do the minimum 60,000. And I tried to cut the lots up so everyone gets a little bit of waterfront.
You know, they are allowed to ask for these waivers, but we are not obligated to.
No, I know, I know. You know, it's, and you find that the fact that you're, that all the lots, except maybe number four, have, one even number four has some direct water frontage, that keeping that in mind, you know, with all the requested waivers and how you're going to deal with the water runoff and all that, you feel that that's any kind of an issue? I mean, you know, I don't expect that with your, with your design here, that any of the runoffs can actually go into the reservoir.
No. So any runoff that I have from the pavement will be pretreated by that drainage well and the catch basins and infiltration basins before. Any type of runoff, which is the water.
So can I ask him, again, as you had explained, that there's going to be a fairly, whether we give a waiver or not, it's still going to be a substantial grade going into the property.
Yes.
And stands to reason you're probably not going to capture all of that coming down onto Ridge Road, right? So what's down at Ridge Road? There's no drainage at Ridge Road?
No, not that I'm aware of. Yeah, so my idea is to do the best I can by pitching that road so I can feed it into that little ditch over there before. And then I'll allow, I have a catch basin proposed on either side. So this roadway, I know it's kind of tough to tell with the grades, I should have included a profile, but it's got a slope significantly up to a high point.
Right.
And then it'll slope back towards the cul-de-sac. So my idea was I'm capturing on either side of the sites. That's why I show these other infiltration basins.
All right.
Worry about water running down onto Ridge Road?
Well, there will be, there's some, there's no question.
Yeah, yeah. So I still, my grades are designed where I'm, I believe it's a 1% grade going into the intersection. So I'm not taking that six or eight percent directly down the Ridge Road.
Well, that's pretty ambitious. that the, you know, it's not a hearing, so it's a formal discussion that there were some concerns that were raised. And while no one here has intimated that they'll definitely avoid giving you some relief, I'm not sure, you know, where we all are at this point.
The drainage, I think, at this point, my biggest concern. The cul-de-sac, if, did you meet with deputy chief or with chief?
So I just sent it over to Chief Laracy for comments, and he just responded to me by email.
What will be the cost savings, Cam, from a 50-foot cul-de-sac to the 41?
I don't have a definite number. So really, when I went through this, I just wanted to show that I was able to put the full subdivision design if need be. But our client obviously wants to get the best bang for his buck out here, so.
And is he, and is it his intention to build the homes as well or just to sell the lots? Do you know?
I'm not 100% sure on that. I could find that out, though.
Okay. And one last question on that radius, not that I'm all that hung up on it. But if you were going with the larger pavement size at that cul-de-sac, would that cause secondary problems with encroachment into the buffer zone in order to get your septic systems up front of the houses?
No. So like I said, my layout line is still the required layout line, so it'd just be expanding the pavement within my layout.
Yep, got it. Usually when we grant waivers, there's some benefit to the town.
Well, I think the benefit would be you'll never be plowing it or maintaining the road, which is a benefit.
Which is usually the quid pro quo.
And when it comes to the, the streetlights, the way we're for the streetlights, I think the last subdivision that we did that was, that was to remain private is the requiring them to put a lamppost at the end of their driveway so that there is some light in the subdivision rather than a full streetlight.
Just for curiosity's sake, you had mentioned that you had filed with conservation, and basically they just kind of confirmed your wetlands delineations. Was there any other kind of general feedback of this nature?
No. So we didn't show anything that we were proposing out here, just to verify the wetland line.
Okay. What's the total length of the roadway?
So.
Excuse me.
I think it's about 380 is the length of the roadway to the end of the pavement, and it's 403 to the end of the layout.
Nope. My question was going to be about the fire department and the radius.
Well, I don't think you have anything further to say.
No?
I'm cool. But you can.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Go talk to your client, bring us a definitive plan. Thank you, Cam.
Thank you, Cam. Okay, it being sometime slightly past 7:10 PM, a continued public hearing, a site plan review, 7 Perry Drive, construction of a 12,000 square foot addition on the southern side of an existing commercial building, protect the metals.
So, Mr. Chairman, the, we left, we continue this hearing because we needed to go through the, the plans with our peer review. And Mr. Buckley responded to the initial peer review, and we had a meeting with them to discuss it. Pretty much everything has been addressed that they pointed out. There's one condition that was suggested about regarding test pits in the loading area, I think, Bill? During, during the final design, then we would request that they do test pits because they couldn't do them right now.
So has it, it's been continued to tonight or it's been continued beyond tonight?
No, no, continued to tonight. So the, we received a letter from our peer review and stating that most of the items are closed.
Any questions from anybody?
No.
Were there any comments from any outside boards or departments?
Yeah, I think those were right until the record the last time.
Okay. So is it your recommendation that we move forward?
Yeah, yeah. I would recommend that the board vote to approve this with the standard conditions and the added condition requiring the test pits in the loading area prior to construction.
Anything else from anybody else?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Aye.
I'll obtain a motion to approve. Anyone want to make that motion?
Do we need to put any conditions in there?
No.
Standard conditions, yes.
I'll make the motion to approve with the standard conditions as noted.
On the test pit?
In the test pit.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Yes, right on time. It being sometime around 7:15 PM, a public hearing, special permit site for 3032 Wall Street, a proposed remodel and expansion of an office/commercial mixed-use project, TNC Development LLC, True North Construction Incorporated. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
I'm Mike Corey, counsel for the applicant, Madoff &amp; Corey, Pine Brook Office Park. We are coming before you today with a proposal to redevelop the property at 3032 Wall Street that's located at the corner of Cocasset Street. It is a two-unit building, first floor commercial unit, second floor residential that was built in 1930. And frankly, it's dilapidated and is in desperate need of renovation. It's been vacant since before our client purchased the property. The lot size is 700, 7,300 square feet approximately. It's located in the general business district and the Foxborough overlay district. The proposed size of the new building that we'd like to put, which would be built, the additions would be to the left and right side of the existing structure, would total approximately 3,600 square feet, staying at two stories. And those would be four residential units. So it would go from one residential unit above the commercial unit to four, two on the south side, one on the north side, and then the existing residential unit above the commercial unit. We would propose to provide new landscaping, 1,380 square feet of it. And we would, of course, connect to sewer. There would be an installation of a stormwater recharge infiltration system that's currently not existing, decrease in the impervious surfaces by 450 feet, and again, provide new landscaping that is frankly much more appealing than what's there now. And it would substantially improve the appearance and design. Again, the building is nearly 100 years old. It's located on a relatively small lot that really does not accommodate the, the current dimensional requirements if we were to do any kind of renovation that would be worthwhile. Before I get into the relief we requested, I wanted to note the, the Health Department sent an objection to, or a memo, a comment on our application. And at first, I was taken aback. I spoke to my client. He purchased the property in August 2022 from Michael Pacella with the intention that Mr. Pacella would attack, would connect the property to a public sewer. He wasn't, the seller was not able to do that, and my client went forward with the purchase anyway. He did not allow anyone to live there. He hadn't, hasn't used the property for anything other than storage of, outside, outside storage of vehicles and heavy equipment. He's a builder. In, as I said in my of vehicles and heavy equipment. He's a builder. In, as I said in my memo to the board, in March of 2023, he engaged a site contractor. That contractor had someone who Jim wasn't familiar with personally, who said, yeah, I'll get you a Title V report. He did, he forged it, submitted it to the Health Department. The Health Department contacted Jim. Jim said, I have no idea, and Jim said, look, I, you know, we're not going to let anyone in there. The Health Department said, okay, just don't put in a new septic, let's connect to sewer, which Jim, Hasem Danny, the engineer and I, had all started working together around that time in March, earlier this year, and that was his intention all along. I want to address that first and foremost because my, my client is not a liar or someone who would do something that stupid. This, this site contractor has disappeared. His phone is dead. He, Jim has tried to track him down. He's been unable to do that, but I wanted to address that with the board because, as I said, it really kind of threw me when I start. So, the, the new development, and Mr. Donnie, the engineer, can, can go through the elements. It would substantially improve the property and allow it frankly, to be, to be renovated in an attractive way. The, the, the cost will be significant and there are challenges because it's an old lot and an old building in an older neighborhood, but we really feel that this, this renovation fits within the principles and purpose of the Foxborough Commons Overlay District. Just to summarize the relief we're asking for, we're looking for relief from the setbacks under section 9.7.6 of the bylaw. Under the Foxborough Center Overlay District, it's required 10 feet front, side, and rear. The existing front setback is 2.5 feet. We're proposing to bring it right up to the limit, essentially zero. The side setback to the left side is 25.7 feet. We're proposing with the redevelopment to bring it to 7.4 feet, 2.6 feet short of the requirement. And the rear, the rear setback would be 8.8 feet on the north side and 5.3 to 5.6.3 on the south side, again, with the required setback being 10 feet. We're also looking for a special permit under 9.7.5.1G, which allows for three residential units, other things being equal, in a mixed-use development in the Foxborough Commons Overlay District. We're asking for one more. That's critical here because we've, we've had a couple of meetings, informal meetings, with Gabby and Paige before she, before she got a battlefield promotion, as well as the, the DPW head and Mr. Shippey. And we had a larger proposal and they said, bring it down. And we thought that with four units, it would, it would be acceptable, and we're hoping, we're hoping we can because it really, the financials of this require it. The, the construction financing is necessary. There's, it's, it's a really tight budget and anyway. The third item of relief, we're looking for a reduction in the required parking for the commercial unit. 9.7.8 requires 1.5 spaces per residence with one visitor space. If there were four residential units, there are here, so since we, we proposing four residential units, we would have to have seven spaces. We've proposed eight. Also, for the commercial unit, the code requires one parking space for every 300 square feet of space in the commercial unit. What we're proposing here is essentially what the commercial unit has now, on-street parking. It's never had available parking within the, within the off-street. So, the 9.7.8 instructs that for a mixed unit, you should sum up the total number of spaces required. Here, seven units are required for four units and for four commercial units, and four units are required for a commercial unit for a total of 11. We have eight spaces that we're providing. Under 9.7.10 subsection 1, the, the Overlay District authorizes this board, doesn't mandate, but gives you the power to reduce required parking by 50% if, if the residential and commercial parking isn't in conflict at peak demand times, or by 30%, even if they are competing. We're asking for a reduction of less than 30% here. That's, you know, summary of, of what we've got. We, we need to address the parking and access issues that were raised by both, by all of the Police Department, the Fire Department, the DPW, and, and the Building Commissioner, but I, I defer to you how you'd like to go from here.
Well, honestly, that's the elephant in the room.
Yeah, yeah.
We've all looked at these plans and I don't think anybody on this board is comfortable with the orientation of the parking, how vehicles would exit, enter. You're into railroad and.
Right.
Encroachments. When your client came before us initially wanting to do a multi-story there.
Yeah.
He had mentioned getting parking, possible parking from the real estate office behind.
21 Coacit.
Right. I think if you could manage to do that, we would be amenable to talking about other things, but at least from where I sit and Kevin near the chair, I don't feel comfortable with that at all.
Sure. And Mr. Pressey, is that, is that with respect to the two units that are on the, two parking spaces that are on the curve, or with respect to?
All of them.
All eight?
All of them. I mean, if you, if you look at the reports from the.
They're all going to back into the street, one street or another.
Right.
And it's, it's a blind intersection, you're in a railroad crossing, and Coacit Street is extremely busy. You've got to back in or back out of those spots, so.
And I, and I say, I take a little bit of an issue with what you're saying. There was never onsite parking. There was so much onsite parking that there was, that there was heavy vehicles there and a boat for like six months with a trailer.
Yeah.
So, I mean, there was available space there. I'm not saying it's going to fit this plan, but there was always onsite parking.
Right, but it was also pull-through, which.
Yeah, you're correct, it was. So, I mean, it's not like it didn't exist. It just, you can't, you can't make it work with your, with your proposal.
Yeah. I mean, the concept, the design, I think.
It's an improvement.
It fits the, you know, the area much better. The parking is a no-go.
It's currently a mess and you can't be occupied.
I'm not going to dispute that.
Without, yeah, yeah.
But I was surprised when I, this plan over, because we specifically talked informally before your involvement.
Sure.
Mr. Corey, I think it was in January, about the likelihood, no, I wouldn't even say the prospect, about the likelihood that there could be some sort of arrangement, whether it's a long-term lease, whether it's a permanent easement, who knows, that you have to buy.
Yeah.
I would think in order to satisfy us, but I don't know if that was ever pursued or even any, any, you know, just feelers out there that got rejected or what the deal is, but this is, this is a problem.
It was pursued.
Is it?
Didn't go very far.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, he has to be on the park enough himself. Well, I mean, he does, but, you know, from where I think we all sit, it, it would not make very much sense for any of the officials on this board to be rejecting out of hand the recommendations of the specialists in public safety that are weighing in on that.
Right.
And that's kind of putting yourself out there where you don't want to be.
Yeah. Can I ask, I was a little surprised that, is, is the town's position that they, on any new development, they don't want to see, even a residential, they don't want to see cars backing out of driveways? I understand on Coacit Street, it's big, but Wall Street is pretty quiet. I, I back in, I drive by all the time, but I don't live in Fox.
It's a universal statement. I don't think that's accurate. I think it's a case-by-case basis, of course.
Yeah, okay.
What else we propose, parking under the units? So, like, what if we propose parking under the units? So, for example, there's some other houses on Mechanic Street where you enter the, there's a garage, you know, as, as you pull into the unit, and then there's an entry vestibule, and then you go up to the second floor of the unit, walk up a set of stairs. That would provide parking, one extra spot per residential unit.
Would you eliminate those ones that are coming to the street? So, you know, or were you saying that like if you had two, if you had two residents in the unit, would one be in the garage and one be behind them and still be the same situation?
Well, a similar situation, yes, but it would, you know, it would provide one extra space. They would, you know, obviously need to coordinate who's parking where, but, but.
But I think your point is that you'd still be backing out.
Yeah, you would still be backing out. I mean, whoever uses it now would be backing out and it's, somebody's been backing out of there for the past 70 years. So, I don't, I don't think what we're proposing makes an existing condition any worse. I, I completely agree with the comments regarding the, the parking on the curve there. We don't want people backing out into a railroad and, and I support that. I'm behind that. We overlooked that, but if we don't, if we can, you know, pull in, pull it, or, you know, when you, when you pull into the space, you could just back into it so that way you're not pulling out. You know, I don't, I don't know, it's the way it was and there's really no other way to address that.
So, just generally speaking, then, if, if we were to entertain that type of concept, you'd be getting into Unit 3 from Coacit Street?
Unit 2, this one? Yes.
Yes. And then, Unit 1 and 2, and then you'd still have, and where would your commercial spaces be, I guess? I mean, we don't need to get into this level right now. I'm just saying that there's some, even to pursue that concept would require some rethinking.
Sure.
Yeah, that's a good point about the commercial thing too, yeah. And can I ask, can I have a question for the, the two parking spaces on the corner, on the radius? So, do I read that correctly? Like, half of those, that's town property?
Mr. Chair, that is correct.
Right, that's what I thought. And so, I guess my question is, is I'm, I'm not really, really familiar with that type of scenario and how that works or doesn't.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, that would require an easement from the town.
Okay, yeah, that's how it would work, all right.
Which I'm sure you would not be granted.
And who would?
And that corner, and that corner.
Who would be responsible for granting that?
By selection, yeah. But the board, the select board.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Chair, if we modify the plans, how Mr., how James said, by having the parking underneath the units, we would have the ability to eliminate those two parking spots on the curve. That would eliminate the need for an easement or lease, and we would have sufficient parking for the development. And for the commercial space, that was one of our requests to use the public parking spaces on the street for the public, for the commercial use.
So, on Wall Street or on, or on?
Coacit.
Within 500.
It's, it's, if you can find a way to resolve the parking issue, I know this board would be interested in continuing dialogue. If you can't, I really don't know what we can do.
Does the board feel comfortable with the setback waivers that they are requiring?
Requesting.
Requesting, sorry.
I think that's moot at this point because that.
I think, I think that needs to be discussed too.
No, and I almost want to kind of like, put a kind of hold or a little bit of a damper on this because there's, there's a little bit of a cascading issue effect here.
Yes.
If you know what I mean, and I hate to just say, oh, yeah, you know, go and redo your plans and spend that money, and then there are other issues that are yet to be explored.
Well, that's what I meant by we'd be interested in continuing dialogue. I'm not committing, I don't want to commit to anything.
Well, I mean, obviously, we're going to continue this hearing anyway, but I, I almost think we need maybe a little breathing space to kind of think, maybe you people can think without spending a lot of dough, throw some ideas our way, vice versa. I mean, I, I don't know if you don't like that approach, but right now, I don't see this going very far, as is, of course, if that makes sense.
Sure. If, if we came before you with the redesign, could we meet on an informal basis?
Well, it would still be the hearing.
No, it's going to be a public hearing. It's going to stay open.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I mean, it certainly can be conversational in tone.
Right.
And I would think that even at that point, we probably would be looking at another continuance, you know, if and when we ever get to any point where we're going to be actually rendering a decision.
Sure, sure, okay.
I, I would also just make one other recommendation, just for a little research. When I was looking into this earlier in the week, there had been a comment, I don't know if it was in this packet or whether it was in one of the comments that came in on the project, maybe from building, I'm not sure, I forget, but it was that the garage at 24 Wall Street actually encroaches on this property minutely. And so, going to the assessor's maps, and I know that they're not always super accurate, you know, and that sometimes the visuals don't give the true representation, but what it looked like to me is there were a number of encroachments, including this property onto 24 Coacit and 24 Coacit also.
The one behind them?
Yes.
Well, I did, we did look in the Building Department at the asphalt plan for the addition, the, the garage next door.
Of this property?
Yes, on that property, the property next door, and it does not encroach. The asphalt plan that, that was filed after the construction, it doesn't jot into anybody else's property, but it stays within the property.
Okay.
Of the homeowner.
I mean, I just wanted to be sure.
That was my understanding as well.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
We have Mr. Nichols from 24. Yes, I know we do, so I'd be happy to let them speak.
Mr. Chair, can I add one thing to the setbacks? Does the encroachment of the abutter on the building setbacks support our request to relieve from building setbacks as we stated in our application?
Well, maybe that's where I saw it.
Well, according to what you just said, though, there is no encroachment, is that correct?
Correct.
No, you would.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, you were talking about that.
They're encroaching on the setback.
I don't know.
I'm going to have to give that some consideration, I think.
I, I, again, I don't necessarily think you need to compound a situation. I mean, I think in that situation, that's a private matter, you know, the way I look at it, between abutters, you know, to resolve.
Mr. Chair, can I clarify?
Yes.
What I'm trying to explain, that even if the garage is within the abutters property's, the property line, they're still encroaching on the building setback on their property. And we're not asking to encroach on somebody else's, else's property. We're asking to reduce the building setback on our property. So, it's a similar situation to the abutters, what we're proposing.
I, I understand that.
Yeah, I understand, but I don't know that they made a request at the time either, so.
I certainly think we would, we would have to give it due consideration at the time when you come back with something else to discuss. So who was the abutter? They wanted us to?
Mr. Nichols. Well, it's his garage.
But if you'll create a, come forward or speak from your seat, whatever you like.
Yeah, I had applied for.
He needs to go to a mic.
You need to go to a microphone, please. You can go to the lectern.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, I had applied for a finding with Bill Casparra back in the day. And I think it was you, the board, some of the members that were here, said it was okay for me to have that extra three feet. And as long as I kept the original footprint, it was actually to keep my snow blower in the garage.
Did Mr. Casparra provide that for you or no?
Yeah, he was the one that worked with me to get that. Yeah, as opposed to going for a variance or something like that, his finding. He thought that it would be, you know, it was sufficient to do it that way. And, and the board had signed off on it and we moved forward. And I had no idea of any encroachment or anything like that. Because I made sure that I did get the, a plan that I was not, you know, I had to use the, the plan that was, that was provided for me from the existing garage, stayed within their footprint, in which he came down and checked all the setbacks and everything. So I stayed within the existing garage's setbacks and everything. I mean, if I really, I can see if I can, see if I can find some paperwork, but it was quite a few years ago.
I only brought that up because I was observing all sorts of crazy stuff going on and how much of it was, you know, is actual or not. Would take some homework. Thank you for the information. Anyone else? Yes, sir? Can you just give us your name and address?
Uh, it's Michael Campbell-Gianna. I own CMI Realty, which is 21 Coacassett Street. Some of the questions that I have about this project is, as you already brought up, the parking spaces. I'm wondering if there's space for handicap parking there. I also own the property that abuts their property. I'm concerned about people parking on my lot, visitors who are, um, coming to that property, and also the retail outlet, or whatever's going to be there in terms of a commercial enterprise. Where are those people going to park?
There is one space that's designated as handicapped.
But there's only one space, but if you're going to have three two-bedroom apartments, you're potentially looking at at least six people.
Well, he can only go by the town bylaws for parking. That's what he has to satisfy.
Go by the where?
The town bylaws.
Town bylaws. Well, I'm concerned that the people are going to be parking in my lot.
We understand.
And people are already parking my lot now, even from the people in Building 17. And they're also going to be setting back further, closer to my property border. I'm also wondering about snow removal. How are they going to remove snow there? I know, because I've experienced it in my own property, snow removal is a challenge. Even in my lot, as large as it is, as it is, I have 40 foot parking spaces there for an 11,120 square foot building. So, I mean, I have plenty of parking, but I lose a lot of parking just for, um, the winter months from snow. And I'm sure that there's going to be a problem there. And trying to back out onto, onto Coacassett Street, it's going to be a major problem, as you folks have already mentioned. It's a dangerous corner and there's a lot of tra, there's, I disagree. There is a lot of traffic on Wall Street and a lot of, a lot of traffic on Coacassett Street. So I'm concerned about, about that. Has the variance already been approved for the parking?
Nothing's been approved yet.
Nothing has been approved yet, no. And what are, what are they going to be doing for trash? Are they going to be putting a dumpster on that land, on that property? Is there room for a dumpster? Or are they going to be having, using barrels and setting barrels out in the back of the property, which will probably wind up blowing into my lot? And I personally don't want to be responsible for cleaning up somebody else's yard. I have enough to do with my yard. So I'm, I'm concerned about some of those things, particularly the parking. And when people, when the residents there have guests that come over, where will those guests be directed to park? Central parking? I doubt it. I don't think they're going to walk quarter of a mile. And they'll be parking in my lot, which means I will be forced to have a cost of, unfortunately.
I appreciate your input.
Mr. Chairman, he brought out two points that I, I pointed out to Mr. Corey today. I apologize that I didn't do it earlier, but it is that we, there's no place on the plans that shows snow storage and no place for dumpster locations. That needs to be screened. So that's something else that needs to be considered.
Yes, it does. Yes, sir?
If I may, my name is Richard and I currently reside at 31 Coacassett Street. I do feel that appeasing, it would be a great appeal to the neighborhood having a nice building that would be there.
You said your name's Richard, but can you give us your last name?
Oh, sorry, it's Wilson, sir.
Thank you.
I do feel that it would be a very appealing building to be there currently than what's residing there now, especially the dumpster there. I'm sure it's a nice store for other people. I used to live on Cape Cod. I was part of the building commission. We would do everything from historical building restorations to new projects. I definitely feel that it would be in hindrance with the backing up of the vehicles in multiple areas. I do have a problem myself backing out of the road itself over on my side. And it's just a straight back, whether it's going to Maple Street or going into the middle of town or even to the post office. I feel if the building was more compact and there was a situation where if you only had the building on this side and you eliminated the one that's on the curb on the right side of the property, that there would maybe be a way to have a pull-through system. Do you have the cars parked there? As much as it might not be ideal, it would be a better system. Again, the trash is an issue. I know that, you know, no matter what kind of construction goes on, construction is going to be an issue when you're now trying to block off-road, whether it's sewer, water, whatever it may be. I know that's also going to put a damper on. I see multiple fire rescue go down the road. If there's any kind of a blockage there, they have to wait for that to be removed, whether it's by a crew or a vehicle in the way to allow them to pass by. There is the issue, again, the snow removal. I know that we have issue on our side trying to get that as well. Sometime it's a little bit backed up, especially with the railroad system going by. Sometimes it's going to go by normal, sometime it might be sporadic, especially on game days on Sunday, we just have the commuter rail go by at a certain time. With the property size itself, I know it's more of a personal thing. It's not so much of a town matter, but there is the privacy. It is a higher building, so it would be looking into other people's property, especially that on 24. Even though they do have a higher fence than we do, they'd still be able to peer over it. My concern is if I'm in my yard and I'm having a cookout or bonfire music, is that going to disturb the current tenants that's across the street? Are they going to complain that we may have dogs barking in the middle of the day? Do we have anything that's going on in the yard that they might consider a nuisance on their end? That would be the only thing they'd be worrying me about, my property itself. I do have a mother that has chronic illnesses and a compromised immune system. One of the reasons why we settled here is because before we knew that it was being sold, the dumpster removal that was there and the almost finished project of the meat and fish store that went in was that she could be outside without any problem of dust or anything going in. Putting any kind of system, using a diamond saw, I've used personally, that kicks up a lot of debris. There's going to be a lot of debris from, if there's going to be any demolitioning of the building or any extensions onto that, that's going to be coming into the yard. It's going to be very hard to explain to her. You can't be outside between set period to set period without compromising your lungs. I, I can't really, you know, tell her, hey, don't go outside, you know. That's, that's going to be a little, you know, cruel to her on her end. Again, being in construction in the past, I do understand that that is a necessary thing that you have to go through in order to build any property, whether it's a shed in your backyard or a three-story building. Again, I think that if the property was moved further to the front, so you eliminated the parking spaces, brought it completely in, and again, had that option where underneath there was a pull-through system, you had to pull through the back of the building, take the stairs up, and had it a little shorter where it's not going to infringe on a privacy matter, I think they could safely park in, back out of the back of the building and pull around to Coacassett instead of having to back out into the street. I have seen kids, you know, not necessarily nearly miss a car, but there's been close calls before, you know, just because there is that blind corner, not only on my street, but turning from the post office area. Other than those safety concerns and the fact of, you know, how things are going to be removed, whether it be trash, snow, and the, the parking situation, I don't really have a matter, but those definitely hold a high concern for me.
We appreciate your, your input. I, I just wanted to know.
I have more people who would like to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me, no, no.
That's alright, no problem.
I'm Nancy Nichols. I live on 24 Wall Street. And we are directly on the side of the proposed development. Thank you, Michael, and I believe it's Richard. They covered a lot of things that I, you know, had written down, so thank you for that. One of the concerns also is the on-street parking ban in the winter. Where are these people going to, you know, park? Because we also have the snowstorms during the day and then also the ban at nighttime. Okay, so that is a concern. And the other thing that really, really is passionate to me because we've lived here for 49 years and it's been a family home and we're the only single-family house. And the encroachment, okay, for our yard is unbearable. This is my backyard. I invited Jim to come over and work with us to see it. Okay, this is only a portion of it. We have an outdoor fireplace. We have a pizza oven. We entertain. Ma'am, ma'am, you need to speak in the microphone. I'm sorry. I'm going to pass this so you can, you know, see part of our yard, okay? We have a small piece of pie. We've used every space. We have worked very hard all our life for this. And the encroachment, you know, with the side lot is going to be unbearable for me. You know, I have been very, very upset. It's not that we don't want him to build on that corner lot, but to build something that, you know, whether it's one less apartment on our side, so the, um, so it's not like right at our fence. How do I, are you going to be able to hear me?
Yeah, you can point to and then come back to the microphone.
Right over here, this is our property line. We have an eight-foot fence that we put up about four years ago, okay? For privacy, because Mike Facella didn't take care of the lot. It was just the way it was awful. So we got a special permit to be able to put, we had someone come down, take a physically look at our property because it's so different on paper. So they came down, they allowed us to do an eight-foot fence. We spent a lot of money. It's a composite fence. It's not cheap. It's attractive. So right here is our property line, right straight down, okay? Now he wants to build this addition here, a unit, okay? And then with the setback, I know the Foxville Center overlay district, it's 10 feet, okay? And he wants to do it to 7.4. Every inch to us is everything, okay? Right now, with the old garage, from our fence to the old garage, it's roughly 25 feet, okay? If he eliminates, okay, keeps this, keeps the.
Existing.
The existing, you know, office and then apartment, and then keeps this one, eliminates this, that will give us more privacy on our property, more green space for, for Jim and for the town, okay? And it will give us a little bit, bit more of privacy if you plant, you know, trees or something, you know. So, because that second floor has five windows. And then above on the roof line is, you know, two dormers. I don't know if they're, you know, used or not. But overlooking our backyard, you know, seeing everything. We entertain, we have family, friends, you know, what's going to happen? Are these people going to complain? I mean, we're not wild and nuts. I love my rock and roll. But are they going to complain about the smoke, the pizza oven, the outdoor fireplace we have? You know, I have health issues. I have a jacuzzi because of my health issues, alright? I have no privacy at all, at all. And it, you know, I'm heartfelt, you know, it just bothers me so much, you know, that to have all these special waivers and, you know, to build something that's so large. And we're not saying, we're not opposing him, you know, to build. We're just asking downsides. You know, we have all these issues that everyone has concerns with, you know. I mean, I, I don't know what else to say. I mean, we're literally thinking of moving, you know? And then, and this is my life. We live here. You know, that's the difference. I, I just can't take it, you know? I mean, we worked all our life, raised three kids. I had a business for 17 years. I just closed my business in December of 2022 because of parking issues on Wall Street. Was I ready? No, I wanted to keep my business for two more years when I turned 70. And because of the parking issues, um, it's just, you know, that's just part of it.
We understand that. It's been a lot of development in your neighborhood, we know.
You know, and, yeah, and that has been ongoing for, you know, this will be almost five years since the start of the meetings. And then now we're going to relive it all over again. I just want to live.
We understand.
You know, it's just very difficult, you know? And I hope that, you know, you can, you know, work something out, you know, but, you know, don't take all, everything away from us. You know, we ended up putting a fence in the front of our house, from our house to the shop, so we can have some privacy, you know, from the building across the street.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that, okay? But when I'm out there, everybody is in, you know, is looking in, you know? So we ended up putting a seven-foot fence. How are we going to, you know, buff that? I don't know, you know? So I mean, I just hope that you're able to work something out and, you know, understand where we're coming from.
Well, right now, the parking issue is the biggest thing that they need to address. And if that can't get resolved, then the rest of it's moot.
I know, and I didn't touch base on, you know, like the parking. I mean, we went through all the meetings with 29 Wall Street, the, how dangerous that corner is. I mean, I've seen, I've lived here. I mean, if anyone knows more about that corner, it's me.
Yeah, you live right there.
You know, so, but thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who has a commentary tonight? And obtain a motion to continue the public hearing?
So the last two meetings for the year are 11, 9, then we get into Thanksgiving and December 14th.
Then I won't be here the 9th, I know that.
And the, yeah, the 9th, Kevin's not here.
One more thing before we continue. The, the property is within the design review area. So when the plans are revised, we would need to have the design review committee look at them.
So the plans coming forward need to be very formalized and then?
Once, you know, they're finalized.
So when is the December meeting?
December 14th.
Does that work for you?
That's fine.
And I would just encourage you to, you know, continue a dialogue with Gabby, through Gabby, you know.
If, you know, there's, there's gonna be some issues that need to be addressed. You know what they are. And we'll just see if we can make some, some progress here. And if we do, we do. If.
If not, we don't.
I think everybody on the board's in agreement that the site could definitely use the facelift.
For sure.
And, you know, we're in favor of that. But it's gotta be something that's palatable to us and palatable to the neighborhood to work.
What I'm trying to understand is what the, the park, the parking is the parking, right? So if we don't, if we don't do anything, let's just say we don't do anything, it's still an issue. It's still, it's an existing condition that's not great. It's not terrible. There's not, you know, I don't operate my office there, but sometimes I park there. The, the on-street parking on Co Casa is, is ninety percent of the time is wide open. There's, there's not a lot of, there's, there's traffic, but there's not a lot of people parking there, shopping or doing other stuff. It is available. I know it for a fact. And what we're proposing, I understand Nancy's concern on peering down into her backyard and, and I'm sensitive to that and, and we'll work, we'll work on that. I, I respect that she's lived there her whole life and, and, you know, I want to have a neighborly relationship. I'm on board. I'm on board for improving the exterior appearance and the interior appearance of, of it. But what we're proposing is not making an existing condition worse. It, it's not great the way it is right now. If we get rid of the, the entrance on the corner going into the railroad, I think everybody's in favor of that. But pulling in from Wall Street and pulling out on Wall Street, what we're proposing is no different.
We'll have to look at it. Pre-existing non-conforming versus complete renovation of a site changes the game.
So is that, does a motion continue to the fourteenth of December? Is that right?
At said time, Diane?
Seven fifteen, seven-ten.
Let's do, yeah, seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen.
You will not receive a notification, so the hearing has been continued to December?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth at seven fifteen PM in this room.
Second?
I did second.
Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It being sometime past seven thirty PM, we have a public hearing for an accessory apartment at Seven Shoreline Drive. The applicant seek approval to continue the use of a previously approved accessory apartment, AKLT Realty Trust.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you, John? Guys?
Very well, sir. Thank you. John Lovely for the Lemon Family.
Hello.
Hello.
Welcome.
This is Thomas, the son, his wife Alicia, and mother Catherine.
Hello.
They would like to buy Seven Shoreline Drive from Nancy and Tasha. Currently, there's an accessory apartment, which was approved by virtue of a special permit issued in two thousand and twelve. What we're looking to do really is nothing more than change the name of the occupants. There's no change to the layout. We're not expanding bedrooms. It's the same property, doing the same thing with a different family. This fits perfectly for their needs. Mr. Lemon is not feeling well, so that's the reason he's not here. Otherwise, he would be here, the dad. They are here and ready to answer any and all questions. But as I think about this, the only property-specific issue that I became aware of had to do with the building permit, which went back to two thousand and twelve. And turns out, nobody closed it. So Gil went out Tuesday, inspected it, closed it, issued a certificate of occupancy. So we're, I think, as clean as a whistle with respect to the property.
The only question I would have is septic adequate?
Uh, the Board of Health chimed in. The system is approved for up to six bedrooms.
I thought that that's what they had redesigned.
I included a couple of pictures of the space, you know, the accessory space.
We remember going through it.
It's quite, you know, it's quite nice. So we're hoping the board would consider that to allow the Lemon family to proceed with their purchase. They're currently scheduled for November twentieth as a closing date. And the special permit is a condition to them proceeding.
Right.
So you get extra points for bringing us before they bought the house?
Many times, we don't find out about it until after it's passed.
Yes.
We have an attorney, Boston College Business Professor, Business Law Professor, I, I'm sorry, MBA professor. And Dad is also a retired attorney.
And a CPA.
Yeah, and a CPA, just in case.
Got them all covered.
That'd be on my day.
We better make this quick.
We have some educated people moving to town.
Yeah. So, I mean, listen, I, you know, I'll just speak my own mind about this. I mean, the, the whole purpose of this type of, uh, use was allowed for purposes like this. And the fact that you're not making any application to make any changes and that it's pre-existing and was obviously, you know, a fine place for the Tasha family up till this point. I'm certainly inclined to be in favor of it. I will take it.
Yeah, yeah. I have absolutely no issues at all.
No.
This is exactly what we designed the whole system for, so.
Right.
So Gabby and Diana did make it easy on us, I must say. Thank you both.
Well, with that being said.
Shame on you, Diane.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Can, can, we need to, we need to activate Tom?
Oh, we do, because my, because our friend here, Jeff, had to walk away because he's a, out of butter.
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Consider me activated.
Stand up, take a bow. Okay. Once again, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that motion. Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve or submit it.
Second?
Hold those in favor?
Aye.
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 Just that easy.
There you go. Good luck to you in your new home.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Aren't you glad you weren't on the car, Wall Street?
Anything else?
Uh, no, just the signing of the mylar's before you leave, but I think that's.
Motion to adjourn?
Second, Karen? Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for participating. Thank you, Tom.